Okay, so let me see it just stops here. So if you see the screen in our website, right? So if you are, if you wanted to become, oops. I don't have that. Let me see.
Take a screenshot of it.
Yeah, maybe I'll do that. Okay, I did a screenshot here. Paint. Okay, so let's see if I can make it little bit bigger. Can you see, can you all see this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, if you wanted to work in this tech field, right? As a software developer or a software tester, operations expert, from low level engineer all the way to the CEOs, CTOs. If you wanted to really, you know, become that, what you need to do is you need to develop your skills and innovation abilities. This is very, very important. Okay? And what do I mean by skills? It's very important to kind of understand that, right? The future skills, future skills and innovation means technical skills, management skills, tools and frameworks. Tools and frameworks is nothing but your programming languages, your platforms like cloud platforms, there's that, right? Whatever is the enabler, those are all the, you know, skills, that all those things falls under skills, whether it is a personnel skills or whether it is a management skills or a technical skills, right? So you need to develop your future skills and innovation. And you need to develop that on technologies, right? So technologies is different from skills. Skill is like programming language, C, C++. Technologies is nothing but, there are number of technologies that are out there like blockchain, internet of things, robotics. And 5G is also one of the technology, right? So you got to develop your future skills and innovations on some technology. And, and the IT architecture and interfaces where you actually, when you are building up, when you are building a, let's say, a product, right? You might use tools and frameworks, you might use your skills, you might use lot of different things. And then what you do is you use all those things to build a product. And when you are building a product, you might adopt a technology. Hey, I wanted to adopt a blockchain technology. I want to adopt a 5G technology to build my product, right? And then when you build that, after building that product, you need to also deploy that product into some IT architectures and interfaces like cloud, edge and all these different places that you need to install. So that is an IT architecture and interfaces, right? Cloud computing, edge computing and anything that cuts across horizontally, right? So like cybersecurity that cuts across, whether you build, anybody who is building product in this world, they have to ensure their product is secure and not hacked, right? And anybody that, building their product, they may have to deploy it in the cloud or they have to deploy it into the computer in their home or servers in their offices and all, right? So that's what is IT architecture and interfaces. So end of the day, if I have to kind of summarize this, if you want to become a successful in tech field, from basic engineer in these three areas to all the way to the CEOs and CTOs, you need to build your future skills and innovation, right? On intelligent technologies and IT architecture interfaces. So if you are able to do that, you would be a very successful person depending upon the career path that you choose, you know? You can, you can work in any vertical industries like telecom industry or finance industry and things like that. And you can work on providing the customer solutions, products, services or whatever. And you can work on any department, right? Product management, R and D, testing and sales and marketing partnership. You can work on any department. But the core is you need to build your future skills and innovation on all these things. Then you are able to work in any of these departments depending upon your need, right? So the reason that I'm kind of explaining this, now we are jumping into this decoding 5g.zone is because the 5G is one of the technology, okay? And it's mostly falls under the telecommunications industry, right? But this 5G can be used by anyone. It's like a horizontal technology, right? If you are, if you are having a bank, you may, you might require a 5G connection within the bank. And if you are having a phone, today we have four, 4G phone. In some countries that are 5G phones are also there, right? So the companies, any industries, companies, mining, you know, the factories, everyone can benefit from the 5G technology, right? And this technology is going to bring in lot of innovation. Why? Because if you think about it practically, right? The innovations started happening because there is a platform that allows that innovation to happen, right? So if you look at it, when the internet came, right? So there's a lot of dot, dot, dot market kind of started happening, right? And lot of verticals like banking and many other verticals who focuses on the people, right? It's called as business driven communication focused verticals. They became very successful, right? So every time if there is an innovation to happen, you need something that triggers such kind of innovation to happen. 5G is going to be a key technology. It's going to provide you lots and lots of bandwidth. It's going to allow you to connect millions of devices. It's going to allow you to, you know, give you low latency services. So the doctor can instruct, a specialist can instruct. You may not have to travel from America to India to operate anymore, right? Like olden days, he can sit in America and he can direct the doctors in India to do an operation in real time, right? So low latency. So, so these kind of applications can be provided by 5G. And 5G is a technology that is, is going to change the world that we see today to what, what's going to happen in future. So if any one of you are, are pursuing their career in this technology and I'm pretty confident that you will have a great future, right? So that's the thought process and that's the message that I wanted to really give about, about 5G and what, you know, we spoke about Testofer. We spoke about decoding 5g.zone branding within the Testofer. We spoke about the program that we are in study group. And we also spoke about why it is important that you guys can learn and, learn, learn 5G and, and become successful, okay? So now with that, what I'm going to do is we're going to learn something together. And are you guys able to still hear me, okay? All good?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Now, what we are going to do together team is first thing is I wanted you all to know that you have missed three or four sessions if you have not joined, right? So you can always go to this youtube.com and then search for Testofer. And then you can go to this Testofer stuff and there is a playlists. If you click the playlist, there should be decoding 5g.zone view playlist, right? So these are all the different programs that we have done in the decoding 5g.zone, okay? That's something that I wanted to kind of share it with you guys. Okay, and we also have a WhatsApp group. Mickey or someone, if you can post it, you know, you can always find that WhatsApp group and you can ask your friends and colleagues to join who wants to learn more on 5G. So the idea of this program is the first thing is to help you guys to learn the basics of few things that you need to know before you start on 5G technology, right? So that's the key thing. And then once you understand the basics of 5G, then what we are going to do is we are going to start practically learn a open source called magma, right? So magma is probably you may not understand now what it is some of you, but magma is one of the open source that kind of plays a very important role in. It's not only magma, right? So magma is a can, open source that delivers a converse 5G core network, right? 4G and 5G core network, that's what the magma is. And leaving the magma name out, right? The core network is a brain of any telecom networks that are deployed, right? Whether it is 3G, 4G or 5G. Core network is the brain of any telecom network. And magma is an open source that provides a core network. And now we are, after learning the basics of 5G and telecom, we are going to get into and start practically learn magma and how, you know, the magma core network is being designed, how it can be used, how, how 5G calls can happen and all those things is something that we will learn together moving forward, okay? But the first goal is to ensure that we understand the basics. Now, without further ado, I'm going to start on where we left off from our last, last call. But I'll give you a quick refresher, what we so far have learned together and so that you can always go back and view those videos to learn the details. But that's what we are going to do today, okay? So shall we start? Are you guys ready to kind of learn? Are we good?
Yes, yes, sir.
Awesome. Let's get started, okay? I'm, I'm happy that we have like a few, few people. So let's start from here. I'm not going to repeat what, what was thought in the last session and I'm just going to browse through so you can kind of get the continuity, right? So we started learning very, very basics of telecom. In olden days, we used to know a word called switching transmission and signaling. What does it actually mean? We started learning that and then we started learning the first basic network that kind of started to come in place, right? The voice network and, and we started learning what are all the different components that comes together. So when you pick up, in olden days, when you picked up a phone at your home, the landline phone and when you dialed it, how did other person get a call? And how you both were able to talk, right? All you know is you got to pick up a phone, dial the number, that's all you know, right? But behind the scene, there's a number of things that makes it work, right? So what are all those number of things that makes it work is what we discussed about PSTN network. It is public switched telecom network, right? A very old network. And then we also talked about one side, there was voice, voice evolution, right? And we talked about the network that supported the voice services. And the other side, we also started exploring about how the data network evolved, right? The olden days mainframe computer to today, you know, the, the laptops, to the iPads, to the phones and even to the watches, right? Everything is a computer nowadays. So we kind of talked about how the data network kind of evolved and how the multiple protocols evolved. And finally nowadays, most of us use at least IP based protocol stack, right? TCP IP protocol stack, that is the mostly used stack nowadays. Everyone pretty much uses that, right? So that's the kind of discussion that we concluded, but we went through the details of these. Then we kind of refreshed ourselves a very basic fundamental thing. When you talk about any, in this world, any devices that you build, whether it is a Jabra speaker or whether it is a phone, whether it is a computer, whether it is anything that you build, okay? Always has some stack in it, right? It's called as stack, right? TCP IP stack. I mean, it, it's like, you have to remember that the base, the, the computer, when what you are working, it has a physical connection or the wifi connection that connects to an internet, right? So that's your physical layer. Then you have a data layer which has a MAC address. So now when I'm, when I'm, one computer is talking to another computer, like when I'm talking to one of you here, like Rohit, I address him by name. He addresses me by Kada, right? So there should be a unique address for every device that is there in the world. It's called as a MAC address, right? That's the physical unique address of any devices, okay? Was there any question from anyone?
No.
Okay. Right. So that is the MAC address, right? That comes in the data layer. Then you have a network layer which is a logical address, right? Which is an IP address that we have. IP address is not a, not a like a MAC address, right? Sometimes one computer can have an IP address. The same IP address can have, another computer can also have, right? So it's a logical one, right? But the MAC address can change, right? If this computer is assigned with the MAC address, that's lifelong, that's the computer is gonna have that MAC address. So the third one is a network layer. Then the transport layer, which kind of brings, like, let me give you a good example, right? You have Skype for, for example, okay? So Skype is in an application layer. So when you type some text in Skype and then when you put it down, it comes down to the TCP transport layer, right? So application presentation and session layer is all Skype, okay? Then it comes to the transport layer and the transport layer knows, okay, this Skype application is running in this particular port, you know, the IP address and port combination, right? So this particular port, the Skype is running, that's what is taken care by the transport. And then the next layer network, it, it is trying to send it to Kada and Kada's, I need to reach Kada, right? And then it, then, then that, that's the destination address, right? Source IP, destination IP. And it goes down to the data layer, you have MAC addresses. Then it goes to the physical layer and that's how the, there's lot of protocols that happens in between, all those details I don't want to say. But it goes down from all these layers in your computer and then it comes through the physical layer and comes to my computer. And in my computer in reverse, it goes back all the way up. And then it knows, right? In the transport layer, it knows this is a Skype message and the Skype application is using this port. So I have to send this message to Kada's Skype front end. That is how, let's say Rohit sends a message to me, the whole thing that happens, right? I'm pretty sure all these things is something that you have learned in your, in your engineering, right? So this is very important. Why is because otherwise what happens is when you type a message in Skype, you might get it in WhatsApp and some other places, right? So all these things streamlines and makes sure that things are happening in the right place. Then we also learnt a little bit about, very interesting thing is like, before it used to be a voice network separately, which provided the voice service. Then you had a data network which provided data services used by the internet. Then what happened is over the period of time, the voice providers started providing internet services. They started using their infrastructure to provide internet services. That is nothing but in addition to the voice data services. Then likewise, the data network people started providing voice services. Cable started providing video voice data. And then internet provider started providing video voice data like IPTV. So all these network convergence started happening, right? So all these services, when you are providing it to your end customers, that means the network behind the scene also has to evolve to support all those convert services. And that's when we started learning about how the data network started supporting the voice over IP calls and how the infrastructure evolved from the traditional legacy ATM and TDM, T1, E1 infrastructure to all IP infrastructure. And those are all the things that we started learning, right? So then what happened was the most important thing that I wanted you to understand is in that voice network and data network, so far there is no, we haven't discussed at all anything wireless, right? All are wired network so far. And when you have a wired network, you know, there's always a, remember, there's always an application network, there's always a transport network, right? So the application network consists of all the devices that like, you know, that, that's going to take care of the applications like to processing the voice data and, and things like that. And there is always going to be a network that's going to transport whatever that package that application network has from one application node to another application node. In other words, one device to another device, right? So there's always a transport network that connects lot of different application devices. I'm using that, many, multiple people might use multiple words, but I'm using an application device, okay? So the application devices, whatever the package it has, it is transported from one application device, equipment to another application equipment through the transport network. Now the transport network can be within your local area. It could be within your city, within your local city. It could be within your bigger metro area and then between international, right? So there's always networks that are deployed across the, I mean, under the sea, right? That can connect different countries and those are all the transport networks, right? And you know, if you wanted to connect your phone to a, you know, the landline phone, to a DSL, you know, this is what you have, right? Landline phone to your models at home. And then from one model to another model, if you wanted to call your friend, there should be some transport network that connects you both. Likewise, you wanted to call to another network, there's some transport network. So there's always a transport network. And the transport network, as it goes towards the, the, the core of it, right? The, the transport network has to support more bandwidth because most of the calls that happens, internet browsing, everything gets multiplexed and then multiplex, multiplex. So the, towards the, if, if let's say it's the end, if you have a one gig and maybe in the long haul, you should probably have, you know, I don't know, 100 gig, right? To really transport all the data if it is, has to go across different places. So remember this transport network is very, very important. Then we learned about cloud, what is cloud? And we learned about what is software defined network? Because see, one thing is the wired network technologies, that's what we learned first. Then we learned about little bit on the infrastructure, right? What's the difference between cloud and what's the difference? What's, what is cloud? What is software defined network? And what is network function virtualization? So these are all the three key topics that we learned, okay? And you can always go back and look at it. But as a summary, what's important for you to know is cloud is typically came from enterprise and mostly it started from private cloud to the public cloud, then Amazon, Azure. And now what happened was end user like us, we can build a website and we can host it in the Amazon and we can go, we can start our own company, right? Today, that's what this cloud enabled us, the ease of use. And it has evolved in innovation from infrastructure as a service to function as a service now. You don't even have to write functions anymore. You just have to write main.c program, right? Main program, you got to write, everything else is already provided it to you. You call the right function, you have it already, right? But at the same time, it's important, right? The difference between the expert and a difference between a non-expert comes is that a non-expert can build applications that are provided with all the interfaces that are available and, and he can be okay, right? But an expert is the one who, who knows not only the application, but how it is actually built and how this whole system internally is happening to make it work as what it is supposed to do, right? So that's the difference, right? Lot of people are application programmers, they just do application building, calling the APIs. But there are system programs, who knows that exactly what's happening? If I call this API, I know this is an input, this is an output, but inside what exactly is happening? And how that is going to impact the hardware? How that is going to impact the software? And how it is going to impact the physical layer? How it's going to impact the transport layer? A guy who has this big picture, those are the guys who are architects, right? System guys and, and it's always good, you know, to ask yourself a question, whatever that you do, what's happening inside, right? That will help you to learn more and you become very successful. So the difference between the cloud, NFP and SDN, you know, on that context is that cloud is, you know, basically helped for rapid service and application innovation, right? This is what it enabled primarily pioneered by the enterprises and lot of things happened around that, you guys know about it, right? Now this all happened on the enterprise side. On the telecom side, mostly everything was used as boxes, right? And it was not used as, as a, you know, cloud or, or stuff like that. So in telecom, there are like two new technologies that was introduced. The SDN is mostly focused on transport network. Remember I told you the transport network is very important, right? So SDN is mainly focused on the transport network. It basically abstracts the, the transport network in some such a way that you can control the transport network in a more easier way, okay? So you can always look at the previous sessions that I did. I don't want to get into the details, but all you can understand right now is SDN is all about making transport network more efficient, more efficient and more deployable and more manage, easily manageable, low cost, right? And in order to do that, there are certain logics within SDN, right? Separating the control plane to the user plane and managing the, a lot of bare metals from one control plane, SDN controller, right? One controller, SDN controller. So those are all the details, but I wanted you to understand that SDN is mostly focused on transport network and it allows you to manage the transport network very, very easily, right? That's number, that's SDN. And then NFP is all about softwareizing everything, right? Rather than buying a device from a company which have, which is going to sell you the hardware and software. Now what you're going to do is you're going to go and buy only the software and hardware you're going to buy from Dell, HP and whatever the other companies. It's called as commercial off the shelf hardware. Proprietary, you know, you need to understand the difference. The proprietary hardware, commercial off the shelf hardware, right? So the proprietary hardware is something that a company provides to you, built by them with the hardware and the software and they charge you the premium so that you can build your network and then you can provide services, voice data and cable video services to your customers, right? So that's the proprietary products, hardware, software built by the company and sold to the companies like, you know, Rogers in India, let's say Reliance and then Berlin, let's say Odaform, right? So, so these are the companies who buy the equipments, hardware, software, everything proprietary from the, sorry, equipments that are proprietary from the equipment vendors like Ericsson, Nokia. And that's how it used to happen in the past, right? Now what happened is in NFP, right? It's, it's, it's the same concept like cloud, right? So now you're going to buy only the software and the hardware is not going to be a proprietary hardware. The, the software that you're going to buy from these vendors can run in any hardware. Now, when I say any hardware, that's where the name commercial off the shelf hardware comes into the picture, right? So what is commercial off the shelf hardware? The hardware that you can get it from the Dell, HP and all these general purpose hardwares or commercial off the shelf hardwares. You buy them in racks and racks and you buy the software from someone else. And then you manage, you put that software and you manage the network, you know, by, by yourself rather than buying the proprietary equipment. Now what happens is it again increases the innovation, right? It brings the innovation and it helps you to reduce the cost, space, power, number of things, right? So those are the three concepts that you need to really understand. What is cloud? What is NFP and what is SDN? Cloud enterprise brought in. NFP is the equivalent version of the cloud for the telecom world. And SDN takes care of the transport side, right? Softwareizing the transport and managing the transport. These are the three key things that you need to remember before even you get into learning the 5G, okay? So now this is something that I also discussed in our last call, but I like to start from here for today, right? So we have another 25 minutes. So what the plan for me to cover today is to cover the NFP, a little bit architecture. It's kind of a recap, but I, it's very important. Then I wanted to cover what is mobile edge computing. And then all these things are very basics, okay? Then I wanted to cover the basics of, you know, wireless networks. Then see if we are able to, you know, look into the details of how the wireless networks are built as much as we can this week. And if not next week, we will close that. The next week is going to be our last session, right? In the next week, we will close that and then we will fresh start in next year. And then we will start learning the magma open source, right? So that's, that's the thought process, okay? So let's get started on NFP architecture. I mean, you can think this NFP architecture as a cloud architecture. Either Hoover has built it, right? Amazon or anyone has built it, right? Whenever they build, anybody who is building a cloud, what do they need? What is cloud? Cloud is not something that is there in the air, right? Cloud is nothing but taking the hardware from the, the, taking the hardware in your company and put it in a commonplace. So not only your company, hundreds of companies like you can access that hardware and benefit from it. So you are not owning the hardware in your company, but it's owned by someone else like Amazon or whoever. And you are renting it from them and you are using it. And it is somewhere outside of your enterprise. That is why, that is how, that is why it's called as cloud data center and all those kind of things, right? It is some, you're getting it from somewhere, you're not owning it. That's how the name cloud came into the picture, okay? So now anything that you do, right? It requires hardware, whether it's a cloud data center or you are going to put it in your own company, it requires an hardware. So that's what in the bottom hardware resources, right? Hardware means what you need? You need compute power, you need storage and you need network that can connect multiple boxes. Now you need to manage these three things. So you need a management software that manages these three things. That is nothing but virtualization infrastructure manager. And an example is OpenStack, VMware. They are all the softwares that, that are virtual, virtualized infrastructure manager software that manages all these hardwares and then gives you a virtual hardware, right? When you go to an Amazon, you can reserve a virtual machine for you, right? And that virtual machine is provided by this virtualization layer. Normally there is a KVM, Xenex, EXSI and there are proprietary virtualization layers. So what it does is the virtualization infrastructure manager working together with virtualization layer and leveraging the hardware resources that you have and it creates and it provides a virtual computer to you. It's called as virtual machine. In the container world, it's called as a containers, right? So it basically provides you either a virtual machine or a container to you, right? And so it's like a computer for you. It has an IP address, so you can go and put your software in it and make it up and running, website in it and make it up and running, right? So that's what it is. So the software that you put in, in the cloud, you basically put a website, right? But in the telecom network, you put the actual equipments that connects to people to talk with each other or a connect people to browse with, browse the internet. So those are called as network functions or it's called as network functions. If you deploy that network function in the, in the VM, it's called as VNF, virtual network functions. If you are going to deploy the network functions in the container, it's called a CNF, container network functions, right? Cloud native network functions, right? In other words, some people say this, some people say that. So that's the network function. Network function is nothing but a software device that you install. Now every device has to be managed. So you need a management system, right? Now this, there is, this one device is managed by this management system. But in telecom network has got thousands and thousands of devices that has to be managed. It's called as VNF manager. The VNF manager manages the thousands and thousands of network functions, right? This is called as a network function manager. So it's pretty simple, right? So you have a hardware, the hardware is managed by some software and that provides a virtual machine or a and that provides a virtual machine or a, you know, some virtual resources and you deploy your uh you know, network on those virtual stuff and which is managed by each virtual um and network functions managed by the management entity. And if it is more than that, then it is all managed by the network, network manager, network function manager. Now, this whole thing is going to help you to deploy the whole network, but is that all it? No, right? It can deploy, help you to deploy a voice network, it can help you to deploy a data network or whatever, right? By putting the right devices and doing right things. But is that all? No, right? Just building the network is not end of the story. You need to be able to onboard customer into your network, right? So like, for example, if I go to Reliance or Rogers or Vodafone and I go and buy then hey, I want to pay your money and I want a phone and I want a SIM card so I can make a voice call and I can browse. So you go to the front end and then you say, hey, I wanted to do this. Then what happens is when you go to that and when you buy from these one of these service providers, they take your um identity, they take your details, billing details and everything, right? And all those data, but all those data, right, is is provisioned through the business support systems. Right? And then that that is called as V S S and then O S S is nothing but, it's called as an operating support systems. All the network that you have here, it all are managed by V N F, V I V M and orchestrator. But it all has to have one single place to manage everything properly. That's nothing but O S S system. So a network not only has all these devices connected with each other, but you also have a billing supporting system and the operation supporting system that allows you to build your customers, provide service to your customers and manage this whole thing. So this is how this whole network is built from the point of view of N F E architecture point of view, right? And the biggest orchestra, biggest master is here orchestrator who orchest- who manages everything under it. And this is O S S B S S, which which kind of gets the users provisioning and manages everything in the now. But the bottom line you need to understand is everything coming together, working with the customers, managing the network and ensuring that you provide everything in a more managed way, in a software-based way, running in a common off-the-shelf hardware to reduce the cost for the operators to deploy and run the network is nothing but network function visualization. This is very, very important for you guys to kind of understand that. And why we have to go everything softwareized, answer is very simple. Think about it, ten years ago, we were paying for browsing even in K B P, K B P S throughput, we were paying hundreds of dollars. Now we are streaming video and we wanted to pay only five dollars, ten dollars. How can a network survive taking those kind of bandwidth? If you cannot optimize the cost of the network? So optimizing the cost of the network is key so that you can cater the market demand. But it's not only about optimizing the cost, but also improving the innovation. Optimizing the cost and creating an architecture so you can improve the innovation and people can build a lot of things on top of this network. So lot of different new new services can surface in this world and become successful. Companies become successful, people get employed, economy grows. That is why if you think about it, even government of Canada, ENCORE, right? And um and that's a program, government of Canada is investing four hundred million dollars to help companies to come develop something in the five G. Why? Because whenever the new technology comes into the market, the new company is born, new products gets bu- uh gets, you know, born out of that. And people use those product, employees, usage, sales, everything increases. When there was no internet, internet came so much of boom, right? Four G so much, five G so much, nowadays, nobody wants to really connect everything by wire. No house, think about it, if you have a house, you have five computers, if you want to connect all those computers by wire, your house will be running wires under your floors or outside of your floors. You don't want that, everything is wireless nowadays, right? And and that's the, that's the key. Okay, so these are all the things that you can go through offline, but the point I wanted to make is that I kind of explained what is the cloud, N F E is the telecom version of the cloud and we went through the N F E architecture. And what all each function does, I kind of already explained it in a very abstract way. If you wanted to understand the detailed um way, you can always go through this, but at a very high level, very simple, right? What happens is when customer comes in and buys a service that service requires some additional infrastructure, an enterprise is coming, let's say. An enterprise is coming and it is buying thousand subscribers based network from an operator, let's say Rogers or Reliance. Then automatically, they will let know the orchestrator, orchestrator talks to V N F, talks to virtual infrastructure manager to ensure enough hardware is allocated and all the network equipments required to establish and provide services for the hundred subscribers is instantiated and everything is connected and then it is actually provided to that particular subscriber so that enterprise, so that enterprise can use the network for thousand, thousand employees and they can talk with each other. Whether it is internal and they can browse outside and they can talk to the outside world and so on. So all those things practically happens step by step here. And you can go through these step by step here in a more technical words that kind of explains that, right? That's pretty much it is, it goes from here, it goes down, down and it goes from here, it manages this. This whole hardware and V M is managed by this, whole V N F and E M S is managed by this. The whole end system is managed by orchestrator with the right inputs from O S S, B S S and so on, right? So that's the bottom line. And because it's a software-based network, you you know, it's a place for innovation, it can, it has, comes with a lot of advantages. And I don't have to carry the big equipment from one enterprise to another enterprise if I wanted to move. Everything is software, I can go and deploy in anywhere in the world software. And if I wanted to deploy a small network to support ten subscribers, I can do. If the ten subscribers increases into twenty thousand subscribers, I can scale the network because it's all software-based. I can do a goods, I can do a good service assurance, this is another word that you'll always listen, right? You will always he- hear, right? These are all some of the words that you'll always hear, I wanted you to remember this. Portable utility means moving software from one place to another place. And performance you can increase, you can add more and you can reduce more to improve and decrease the performance. And in order to do that, they use a word called elasticity, you need to remember this elastic, elasticity always, right? This is the best, this is the advantage of using cloud. Okay, so you can start with ten subscribers with small resources hardware software, if it becomes ten thousand, you can increase that. So you can increase one computer with more hardware resources or you can, you can copy multiple you computers and you can have ten computers serving ten thousand users, there's two ways you can do, right? You can make one computer big to serve from ten users to ten thousand users or you can make clone the same computer and you can do multiple small computers to do ten thousand users, right? So this is the, this is what is elasticity is all about and there are words that you would hear. Scale in, scale out, scale up, scale down, those are all the words that you would hear. These are very important for you guys to know. Resilience, security is pretty straightforward, right? Making sure no time it fails. Service continuity is also very important turn, the term that you will continue to learn, right? Think about it, when you are, when you are in, let's say, uh Delhi, Delhi and you are using Reliance Network and you are mo- moving, you travel to Gujarat and in that Reli- and a place where the Reliance Network is not there, but your phone still works there. Right? A Vodafone network is there and your V- your phone gets attached to the Vodafone network and it still works there. And you are in, in one place, you are sitting in a car, you are driving in a fifteen, sixteen miles per hour and you are going, you are moving from one antenna coverage to another antenna coverage, it still works. Your call doesn't get disconnected, you continue to speak with the people. So those are service continuing, right? Operations management, you need it, energy efficient, you need it. You need to make sure coexistence with existing network, very, very important. You can't rip and replace the existing network that is out there. Whatever that you new networks that you build, it has to work together, right? With the existing network, it's very, very important. And then the last point I wanted to share with you is the service assurance. Running the network is one thing, but understanding what exactly is happening in the network and taking a corrective action when something goes wrong is very, very important. It's called as assuring your network, assuring your service. It's very important, all the time, you always collect some or other thing. Uh is hardware working good, collect the data. If soft storage is working good, collect the data, network working good, collect the data. If the for network functions working good, collect the data from E M S and everywhere. So you need to collect the data, data is the king, okay? So you need to collect the data and make sure you analyze the data and you use technologies like analytics, artificial intelligence, machine learning, you analyze all these data to make sure that if if something goes wrong, you take a corrective action. If something, sub-subscriber call is not connected, uh because the C P U is increasing, then move that subscribe, create another new device and move that subscriber to that device so subscriber can make a call and continue to speak. So these are all automatic uh heal procedures, it's called as self-heal procedures, right? It's sometimes it's called as self-ex, self-instantiate, self-disin- you know, uh instantiate. So and then this number of things, right? Self-heal, self-all-operate, this number of things, right? Everything is self-automated way, that is also very big that's happening. And those kind of innovations, when you have a software-based system, automation becomes easy, right? So those kind of innovations is also happening. Okay, now moving on, this is very, very important, right? I want to kind of cover these two slides uh before today, right? Before we get into the cellular network in our next session. So this is very, very critical. Now, let's say endpoint A that I have is my phone and endpoint B is the Rohit's phone as an example, right? And if I wanted to make a call to Rohit, then you have to have in between infrastructure, right? So you need to have network functions and below the network functions, you need to have infrastructures. Now, it's possible that I am in Canada, I have an infrastructure and I have some network functions in Canada. And then Rohit has some infrastructure and network functions in um India and all these things has to be connected so that we both can talk to each other across uh cities, across regions, across countries and across continents, whatever, right? So the network that connects endpoint A to endpoint B with all these network functions, which is nothing but the actual equipments, network equipments, right? You need to have this whole thing defined, right? It's called as network forwarding graph, network function forwarding graph. It's kind of important for you because when you start to dig into the details and start to learn about um five G and deploy that in Amazon or anywhere, you would start defining your helm charts, you would start defining your um different charts, right? That would allow you to kind of build this end-to-end networks. And that's in telecom world, it's called as a network function forwarding graph, okay? And then on top of that, this, this whole, you you know, user A to the user B, if he is speaking voice, it's called as a voice service, right? End-to-end voice service. So this is something that's very important for you to kind of understand when you are building a network, right? You are going to connect multiple infrastructures, it's not like everything is going to be in one infrastructure, right? You want to connect multi- I might run, in five G, the most important thing is disaggregation. It's another word that you will learn, okay? So you should be able to put where the the different equipments that connects two people anywhere that you want, depending upon the use cases, so that you can effectively build your network, right? So disaggregation is another word that you would hear and I wanted you to remember that, right? So in order to build the network, it's very important you know these some of the terms, right? If you go down below, it's little bit of practical things, right? Say sometimes what happens is the old network functions are there, which is a physical network functions. Physical networks and functions is nothing but a uh proprietary network function, like how I explained you guys before. So that physical network function is always connected to the transport network. What is the transport network is nothing but wires, hubs, switches and now you can have an S D N there, right? Transport network. So the one that you below here is all transport networks, right? And this transport networks is nothing but in the network function virtualization infrastructure. If you look at it, you have a compute, storage and then you have network. Network is nothing but connecting one, one piece to another piece. Connecting one piece to another piece, how it is done, it is done through the transport network, right? So that's why you actually see here N F E network infrastructure, you can also consider this as a transport network. It could be within the data center, across data center, across cities, continents, cities, countries and continents, like I mentioned, right? So there is a physical network function, there is a physical network function, there is a virtual network function. So this virtual network function is connected to the virtual network function, virtual network function and physical network function. This whole thing is logical, but actually the data gets transported through the transport network, right? So that's what is below here and that is how all these things are connected. And then now this V N Fs that are connecting, those are the V N F forwarding graph that I talked to you about, right? And then physical network, everything is connected, right? It's, you can call it as a network service provider or an end-to-end network service, right? So you can sometimes, mostly these are all the V N F forwarding graphs, right? That that basically, N F is network function, if it is, we put in the V M, it's called as a V N F forwarding graph. If it is put it in the C N F, it's called as a C N F forwarding graph, right? But the concept that I wanted you to understand is there's always something that some, something that you will build that defines how all these different network functions are connected. So the two users can come together and start uh using that network to avail the voice services. It's very, very important, right? So remember these words, network function forwarding graph and end-to-end network service. Alright, so the last topic for today is, I know that I went on boom and boom, 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 boom. I did not ask um any questions or give any time for the questions. So what I will do is with interest of time, I will finish this one because this completes uh one con- one major area of lot of technologies that you need to know, lot of terms that you need to know to before jumping into the wireless technology and start learning about five G. And evolution towards five G, you need to know some of these technologies, right? So that's why I want to kind of go boom, boom, boom and I wanted to finish this today. And then uh next, next time when we start talking about the real uh wireless network, um in next session in two weeks, um you know, that would be our last session for the year, by the way, December sixteenth. We will, we will learn more about wireless technologies and you will see how all the things that I taught you before or shared with you you know, before or you know, in the previous session and this session, that all will come together logically, okay? So now let's look at what is edge computing now, it's very simple, okay? In uh, I'm telling it in a very simpler term uh way, okay? So now, in your company, you used to have your own hardware before. And nowadays, you don't need to have that and you can basically rent it from some providers who provide the data center slash cloud and you can run the stuff or you can have the combination of both, hybrid. Or you can have only the private data center, which you don't want to take it from Amazon or anyone, uh things like that, right? So now, think about where Amaz- Amazon, Amazon's uh data centers are there. Maybe let's say, let's say for instance, right? I'm in Toronto, right? Uh and there is a data center close to my house. So I can deploy uh some my services in that data center and my customers is only in the Toronto area. So they they will get high-quality service because the data center is close by and everything is close by and all these things are good. But imagine uh a situation where my data center is not in Toronto, but it's available in, let's say, New Delhi or or let's say in Berlin or or in Munich, right, um in in Germany, okay? So now, my users, when they are using my applications, they are going to, it's going to be very slow for them, as simple as that, right? It's going to be very slow for them. So the closer the user has an application um deployed, the user experience is going to get us going to be really good, right? And the farther the applications are deployed, the user experience that he is going to have is going to be very low. So now what's happening is the data centers are deployed in multiple places. It's deployed in a long distance, you know, sometimes they call it as a national, sometimes they put it within the regional locations. Sometimes they put it closer to the enterprise and even put it inside the enterprise, right? So like, for example, Amazon has something called as a snow clo- snow cone and and some hardware that you can buy from them and can even put it in your enterprise. So that's what it is, right? So you can, the 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 concept, basic concept is the more closer that you run application to user, the more and better experience, user experience is going to have. Right? It could be a basic, simple Uber application to website, to all the way complex telecom networks and banking applications and many other stuffs. Okay, so from the concept point of view, cloud computing means what? Everything is in, not in your premise and it's outside in your premise, right? And it could be in regional, national, wherever location is. Edge computing means the same infrastructure available closer to your user. And it could be in regional, national, wherever location is. Edge computing means the same infrastructure available closer to your user. Closer to the enterprise, that's all. It's not a rocket science, okay? Lot of people talk about edge computing, this, that and all, right? But conceptually, it's very simple, bringing the data center closer to you. A smaller version of it, a nimble version of it, closer to you and you can deploy the applications there so that. Your customers are going to get a better user experience. That is all the edge computing is all about. Now, in the main cloud computing, you have a hardware, you have a software, you have a virtual machine, you have a V N F manager, you have an orchestrator. You have O S S, B S S, you know, all those things that we learned right in the N F E. I mean, it's the same thing, you need to bring it to the edge, right? But you have to bring it as simplified version, you don't want to bring it the complex, complex, uh complex version, right? So, but the bottom line is, if you are going to put a hardware in your, closer to the enterprise, you still need hardware. You still need all those things that I talked about. You thought that you cannot manage and run the hardware and the functions and everything. But you will have a lighter version of that towards the edge, the smaller version of that towards the edge. So that's what you see in this diagram here, right? So it's also has an infrastructure, it also has a managing the infrastructure, it can also have V N Fs. You can manage the V N Fs, you can also have O S S, B S S if you want, right? The edge level stuff, right? You can put all the applications, everything enclosed, right? You can build, you also have to have a platform to manage the edge, edge, edge data center, right? So that's what it is. So two things, remember, okay? Actually, three things, remember. Number one, bringing the cloud closer to the user, it becomes edge. Cloud computing closer to the user becomes edge computing. Number two, the, when you are bringing closer to the user, it has to be in a lighter weight, that's number two. Okay, and then the last one, number three, is very, very important. From the point of view of deployment, okay? And and I will, this is a network because I've not taught you about the network and I don't want to explain this, this one. I will explain this in the future one. But the last point for today, I wanted you to remember is. In the past day, in the olden days, most of the architecture that we used to build the software. Were called as monolithic architecture to start with, everything runs in one place. And the second thing is client-server architecture. So the client is in the phone and server is in somewhere sitting in the cloud. This is how the system was designed in the past. Nowadays, remember this word, people are building applications using microservice architecture. You have to remember this word, that means what? It's not, you are not going to have just the client software and the server software. You are going to have lots of small, 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 small software that can come together to provide the. Product service that you are building for and you can deploy all these small, small components wherever that you want. You wanted to deploy it in the edge, you can deploy some of this microservices. Some of the microservices like authentication, you don't need it in the edge, you can put it in the center location. So remember this word, third point, microservices, it's very important. See, all these technologies are always connected to the way that you program and the things that you do, remember this, okay? So the microservice is a monolithic architecture, came into a client server architecture, then it came into the service. Microservice architecture, why? Because again, splitting the data centers across multiple places closer to the users and so on. Okay, so these are the three points that I wanted you to remember. Number one, moving the data center closer to the user is edge computing. Cloud computing becomes edge computing. Number two, whatever that you do in the edge has to be lighter weight. Number three, because now the hardware is available everywhere, from national to regional to the edge to the device. Software that you are going to build for a product, whether it is Uber or any product that you are going to build, right? It has to run in multiple places, depending upon how you want to design your architecture. So the people nowadays building the products are all based on microservice architecture. And they moved on from monolithic to the client server to the microservice architecture. And sometimes microservice based architecture is also called as cloud native architecture. Remember, these are all the words that you will always come across, right? So I would like to stop here for today and tomorrow when we start, right? I will kind of, um you know, we will start with, I mean, in in next to two weeks, right? We will start with telecom networks, right? This is the stuff and then by the time we, what we will do is seven slides, we will finish this, the telecom networks by this year. And then what will hap- what will happen is by end of this session, we would have understood all the basics. Now we will be in a better position to start learning the magma open source, right? So that's the goal. So this year we will finish all the fundamentals and next year onwards, we will start learning the magma open source. Play around real, how to actually build the networks, how to deploy the five G networks. And make calls and all those kind of things we can, we can play around in our, learn and deploy and play around and develop our skills. Um next year, right? So that's the thought process. And my kind request to you all is, before you come for the next session, right? Please go through all the videos and especially the videos that, 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 you know, we, we, we talked about today. And then come back because when I'm going to go through all these things, all the things that you learned before is going to play a very, very critical role. Okay, and that's, that's the key message that I wanted to really give you guys. And I also wanted to put this here once again so that, you know, it, it, it makes sense again, right? So okay, anyways, so with that, let's close the session for today. I'll open floor for, I know it's six minutes over time. But just wanted to kind of leave the floor open for any questions, if not, we can close the call.
Uh so you have said about security, uh in your fifth point, there is a point security. So like, if some government asks us that we want to trace this call. Then this, this can be happen or not, because everything is key base, everything is encrypted. So this is possible?
Good question, but yeah, you know, there are regulations that we need to comply to if we. We all, if you, if you all have to stay, stay safe, there are certain regulations that we comply to what government asks us to do. So what happens is, uh specific on government-related stuffs, right? Whatever that they ask, you know, is normally provided by the operators. And on that particular case, um they know there are ways to, to kind of decrypt and do things, right? Um so there are, there are ways to do that, Rohit.
Yeah, okay, so like decrypters will be present by the creators who created, they have the decryption method. And no other way to decrypt it, no?
Uh but you know, you think about it, the operators are the one who is providing the SIM cards, right? So they know. Right? So the SIM card is the one which carries all the private keys and stuff like that, right? And yeah, so they, they, they know, right? When it comes to the, normally they, when it comes to the regulators, when they wanted to kind of understand some of the things, the operators are obliged to open up. And open up to the, I mean, like, I can tell you this much, that whatever that we do on the phones. On the internet, everything can be tracked, right? And and that's, that's how it is, right? Uh there's nothing like hidden, right? Like for example, V B O T C is one of the technologies and whatever that happens between two users. End users is always not decrypted and not kind of seen, right? This is for the normal people like us and even the operators and they cannot, right? But when it comes to the government agencies, you know, the operators have to provide whatever is required for them to track. Uh let's say if they choose, for instance, Rohit, right? And 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 if they wanted to track you, whichever the medium that you are in, they can track you and what you do, they can track you, yeah. And there are ways to do it. And sometimes what they do is they deploy a separate network altogether, a parallel network, right? That kind of taps all the data and provides it only for these reasons. So the, the, the network infrastructure deployed for the security reasons sometimes can be a parallel network. That is not something, you know, anybody and everybody has access to. There's number of ways to do that, Rohit, but it's a good question. There's nothing hidden. It's hidden for armed armies like us, right? But it's nothing is hidden from, from the government or, yeah. Even WhatsApp opens up, if they have to do something in some countries. Uh they have to open up that to that country's regulators, right? I mean, any, yeah, it, it has to, that, that's what keeps us all safe, yeah.
Yeah, and on WhatsApp, we generally see that you are encrypted message, like you are in to one-to-one person you are talking to.
Cannot go and do it, right? I cannot go and hack it, right? Because I don't know things, but the government can do it.
WhatsApp can, WhatsApp can like interrupt my calls and chat. I mean, they have the decoding and everything.
Yeah, everything has to have because it's a regulatory, right? I mean, you cannot, you can, I mean, it's, it's, you got to comply to certain regulations. Like I said, to keep us all safe, yeah. Any other questions from anyone?
No, not from mine.
Okay, go through, I know that we went little bit, thanks Nitesh for joining, right? That tells me that you want to learn some stuff, right? It's really good. Okay, let's continue this, one more session, let's do that. And then after that, I will start involving a lot of magma people to start training magma. That's when I wanted to go official next year. Okay, alright guys, with that, we close the session for today. You have a wonderful evening. Thanks for joining from whichever part of the world that you are from. And please do talk to your friends, colleagues, your colleges and whoever wants to benefit from this particular program, you know. Uh decoding five G dot zone, please feel free to get them in, right? This is pretty much a volunteer program. I do it, this is my passion. My passion is to teach others and learn from others, right? So I, I do this, it's all, you know, for free, pro bono, no profit, everything is nonprofit. So feel free to, you know, benefit yourself and also bring people who can come and teach us and also learn from us. And we all can benefit from each other. With that, let's close the session for today, guys. Take care. Bye bye.